Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, September 19th at 7:00 PM. And tonight, we are in a regular business session. Our first item of business is establishing a quorum, and all members of council are present. The next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the meeting held on September 6, 2022. If I could have a motion to approve those, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second for disposition of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the minutes have been approved. We next have communications. And I did, in the past few weeks, receive a copy of a brief letter addressed to Lieutenant Spear with the Athens Police Department, and just wanted to share a few of the details with you. It's not often that we get very, we get positive comments hitting now and again, but it's nice to have this in writing also. And it says, "Dear Lieutenant Spear, this past weekend was the one-year anniversary of our son being saved by your actions. We're thankful beyond any words that you were there to help. On the night of September 10th, our son was involved in a street fight in which a person struck our son, inflicting a traumatic brain injury. As you reported to me, that person was cocked and ready to go with another punch. Our son's doctor told him that had the punch happened, it likely would have been fatal. The punch didn't occur because you were there and you stopped the person. There's no way I can ever repay the debt. And I realize for you that this is probably just another day on the job, but they report that they were asleep and not even knowing what had happened." He says, "But you were there, doing your job. We thank you, the Athens Police Department, that put you there." I've known three people that had to bury a child. For each of them, it was a wound that never heals. So thank you so much for sparing us that pain." So I just wanted to share that with the community. I think that's the caliber of employees that we have here in the city. And we often see that teamwork, and it's not often that we get to share the comments publicly. So have that. Are there communications from other council members? Councilmember Crowell?
Thank you, President Isley. I'd just like to inform or remind the public that it is Pollution Prevention Week in the United States of America, and we are celebrating it here in Athens. Both the city and the university combine on efforts to keep pollution particularly out of our waterways. We had Climate and Sustainability ambassadors doing a Court Street sweep today, as well as marking storm drains that flow to the Hawking River. So nothing down the drain but rain. And we will be at the Alumni Gate on Wednesday, seeing if citizens can tell the difference between good old Athens tap water and bottled spring water. I'm gonna bet that you can't tell the difference, but come on down and prove me wrong. And there are other events happening all week. So thank you.
Okay. Yes, Councilmembers, if?
Thank you, President Isley. A similar, just a reminder or notification to people that aren't aware, the Athens County Health Department is having a flu shot drive-through tomorrow from 9:00 AM until noon at the Athens County Fairgrounds. It's free. If you go onto their website, you can print off the forms ahead of time, fill them out, just roll up, give them the paperwork, get your flu shot. Easy peasy.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Spielmanis?
Thank you. So one of our members of our sidewalk committee reminded me to let all of you know that we're having next week on September 27th at 5:30 PM at Athens Uncorked, the Athens Curbside Conversation. So come and hear about what the Athens Pedestrian Accessibility Committee is working on. Chat with us about what you would like to see with your experience of rolling or walking, or biking for that matter, but I guess that's rolling too. Anybody that doesn't know where Athens Uncorked is, it's on 14th Station Street in Athens nearby. So I hope you come on out and let us know what you think about our sidewalks, because we're deep in the middle of trying to make a good report on what we need in this community. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, Councilmember McCary?
Thank you, President Isley. With our councils and our cities continue to work with diversity and inclusion, this is also an appropriate time to remind everyone and acknowledge the start of Hispanic/Latinx Heritage Month, which would have began on September 15th and will last until mid-October. And we're also preparing to usher in LGBT History Month, which happens during the month of October, both being great opportunities to educate yourselves about terminology and histories that help explain why these historical celebrations still happen today. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to communications and reports from other elected officials. And we have, we usually go with the Law Director's Office. And tonight, in Law Director and License Place, we have our Assistant Law Director Jesse Brainer Hittl, who's joining us. And do you have any reports for us tonight?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Auditor Heck?
No report.
Our City Treasurer, Josh Thomas, is here, and he has submitted the monthly reports. And thank you, they were here a week, the first week of September. And that is great to be able to look at those.
Yeah, again, I just wanted to come, I haven't been here for a few months, so I wanted to stop by and just let everybody know we're still working. Obviously, you all did get your reports. If you have any questions on those, please, as I've always said, feel free to email me or call and ask. That's what I'm here for. More than anything, I really just came because I wanted to just give a little credit where the credit is due. Some of you know, the Auditor's Office went through a little bit of a turnover in May, May and June, brought in a new person. We worked together and kind of got through the first month, but I really wanted to just give the credit where it's due. The Auditor's Office, at this point, is running so smoothly that my job is very easy. So Kathy, Leanna Wood, Sarah Cherry, Jessica Covert, the newest hire, are just doing an amazing job, as well as Crystal Welch and Toni Brickles over in the Income Tax Department. Again, I cannot say enough, on their behalf, to just say what an awesome job they do. They make my life so easy. Everything is done so well over there that when I go in to do what I need to do, it's just this very smooth process at this point. So I kind of really wanted to just come tonight to give them the credit. Especially, I kind of want to mention Jessica Covert, because she has just been working, you know, she's only been there a couple of months, but she has just been working so hard to learn the job and do it so well that it's just made life a lot easier.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That's a nice segue into reporting that the City Council members did receive a copy of the audit that was performed for the city of Athens. And we came through with an audit well done, and the team and all the departments, I know the departments in the city are asked to pull papers and show things and kind of on notice. Especially during COVID, there wasn't a lot of advance notice. And so we appreciate the efforts of everyone to get that report prepared and done in a timely fashion. Thank you. Okay. Mayor Patterson, I wouldn't forget you, last but not least.
That wasn't the look on my face, President Isley, at all.
Almost.
No, I know. I have several items I'd like to share. One, I think most importantly, and Auditor Heck, please, I'm not, hopefully not taking the wind out of your sails at all or anything, but the city for the 2021 income tax filing, there is an extension of the deadline. And that deadline is Monday, October 17th. It's to remind individuals at that deadline to file your Ohio City income tax returns. This filing is an extension of deadlines to taxpayers who have filed for federal extensions. So I think we can probably find that on the city's website as well. Hopefully, if not, we will get it on the city's website as a reminder. But that's good news for everyone. Councilmember Crowell, you know, you and I agree on a lot of things, but I'm gonna push back a little bit. Our water is much better than any spring water out there. So I'm just gonna share that with you and with the listening audience tonight. I have been asked to sit on a panel at the Urban Sustainability Directors Network in Indianapolis on October 2nd through the 4th as a keynote speaker. It's a keynote panel talking about the city's carbon fee. I was just in Dayton last week on a similar panel at a different conference, but also speaking on our carbon fee. Our carbon fee for a city, the only city in the state of Ohio that has a community choice carbon fee, has really got a lot of attention. It's been slow. I mean, we passed it back in 2018, but it's now starting to pick up as everyone is starting to have that conversation about decarbonization and the things that we can be doing with ours. So I'll be in Indianapolis. So unfortunately, I'll miss City Council that night, but I'll be doing good things, trust me. I also want to mention that we received notice that the National League of Cities Race Equity and Leadership has created an institute. And they are looking for proposals from 13 cities across the nation. We have been doing so much work in this space that I have spoken with Councilmember Micah McCary, as well as our new DEIA Coordinator, Lacy Rogers. Lacy and I would be the third. It's a team of three people, three individuals from municipalities. So we're gonna be applying to be one of the charter groups to go through this institute. I can share with council and possibly put this online, a truncated version, as to what the institute's description is, because it's lengthy and I'm not gonna read it on council tonight. But that deadline for submission is this Friday. And we believe that we have a good base for putting that application together, working with Councilmember McCary and with Lacy Rogers. And then selection announcement will take place on October 7th. So it'll be a pretty quick turnaround. Like I said, I think that we will probably do well in applying for that institute. The last thing I want to share with council tonight is we have a new intern working for the mayor's office, and he happens to be here tonight. We have Drew Longerberger. I know Drew is here. He is going to be working on special projects, and we have lots of them here in the city of Athens. So he's gonna be working closely with the Deputy Service Safety Director and with my office as we have new programs and new initiatives. So he's gonna have his plate full, because all of our plates are full in the city administration right now. So Drew, welcome to the team.
Big project.
Sure, thank you.
President Isley, that concludes my reports and communications.
Thank you. All right. We will now move on to ordinances for third reading. 10222 is an ordinance enacting Athens City Code Title 51, Economic Development, Section 51.01, Athens Community Improvement Corporation, authorizing execution of necessary documents and agreements to create and implement the ACIC and approving the plan and authorizing agreement and code of regulations with ACIC, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I would like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 10222.
Second.
Thank you. And this is something we've talked about a few different times now here in council. It is authorizing the city to create a new economic development tool. So we have a new tool in our toolkit for different economic development projects. And as they may come up, specifically possibly the Armory, but this would give us some options as we look towards economic development within our community.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and second for approval. Do we have any comments or questions from council members? From administration or other elected officials? Or any comments or questions from the audience? Yes? If you have a question, what we do is we ask you to come up to the podium. And so we have for the record your name and address, and whether or not you're representing a group.
Hello, Gabriel Scotto here. I am a student at Ohio University and also an intern at WUB. But anyway, I'm curious, what will this ordinance, what are the benefits of this ordinance to Athens economic development?
Would you like to answer that, Councilmember Grace?
Well, it allows the city to create an entity, that is, the Athens Community Improvement Corporation, that has different options, particularly in terms of financing projects and also eligibility for grants. So grant financing and also loan financing. There are different options for a corporation than a city or other municipal entity. And so that's one of the primary benefits. And I would defer to our city administration if there are other benefits they would like to highlight.
Sure. You know, municipality cannot apply for or work through historic tax credits, which is a real benefit. The other thing that the CIC has the power to do, which we certainly see as being an advantage of having a CIC, is for the disposal of difficult-to-dispose-of properties that the city owns, or properties that we have been challenged with finding the right use for. Because typically, when we dispose of a parcel which is under council's control, to dispose of property, it has to go out sealed bid, highest bidder. And we likely would not know who that is or what the intent for that purchase, what the building is going to become. The CIC obviates that pathway and creates a different way of disposing of properties.
So it would prevent, say, some company from buying it and then, like, using it for a purpose that the city would not, or the surrounding people would not approve of, perhaps?
I think maybe one way to frame it.
Oh, sorry, sir.
I, you know...
I apologize. I apologize. I mean, I misunderstood. I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks for asking for the question. All right. So we have a motion and second. Do we have any other comments or questions? Okay. Then we'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 10322 is an ordinance accepting a 25-year sanitary sewer easement from Ohio University located at the Clippinger Center. It's introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 10322.
Second.
Thank you. This is a pretty straightforward ordinance that the university is granting to the city, an easement for a sewer line that the city has that is located, as the title says, at the Clippinger Center. Pretty straightforward.
We have a motion and second for approval. Do we have any other questions or comments from council members? From elected officials, administration, or our audience members? All right, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 10422 is an ordinance amending the 2022 Appropriation Ordinance and Ordinance 7220, authorizing design engineering of a city sewer system improvements project number 330, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Isley. As discussed previously, this project includes upgrades to existing city lift stations and installation of a new gravity-enforced mains sewer sections. And this is an upgrade to a lift station at Richland Avenue and State Route 682. Yeah, I think that this is going to be a helpful enhancement to our infrastructure and would encourage folks' support.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval. Do we have any comments or questions from council members? Or administration or other elected officials? Any questions or comments from the audience? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, there was a second. Yes. Who seconded, I'm sorry?
Did we not?
I'm not sure that there's a motion, actually.
I don't think there was.
There was a motion. Ah, could I have a second then, please? Thank you, Councilmember Swank. To the day, thank you. Now that we have the motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. 10522 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III, Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.07, Administrative Departments, Boards and Commissions, Section 3.07.41, Athens Recreation Advisory Board definitions. And this is introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Isley. This is a very minor definition change that has been discussed at recent meetings and does not change any of the responsibilities of the advisory board. So I would move that we adopt 10522.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second this time. And do we have any comments or questions? From council members, administration, elected officials, or our audience members? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. 10722 is an ordinance amending the 2022 Appropriation Ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 10722.
Second.
Thank you, Member Grace. There's a number of items in Section 1 of this ordinance discussed at committee and at first reading, including $7,500 for upgrading our code, $21,700 for reimbursement of Ohio History Connection Grant, $20,000 to the Sewer Debt Fund to pay our sewer debt payment, and $2,170 to the Sanitation Fund, which is the receipt of a litter grant. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for the approval. Do we have any comments or questions? Councilmember Swank?
One question about the $7,500 for the updating of the code. Do we update the code on an annual basis? Okay, so this becomes somewhat of a routine matter then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, and any other questions or comments from administration, elected officials, or the audience? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We'll now have ordinances for second reading. And these three readings of ordinances are required by the Ohio Revised Code, and we work them in reverse order. So you may have noticed we had third readings first, and they were voted on. These ordinances for second reading, I will read the title. I will pause briefly to see if there are questions or comments from folks, either amongst council members, the administration, or the audience. And then if not, then we will proceed on to our ordinances for first reading. 10822 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title V, Public Utilities, Chapter 5.02, Garbage and Rubbish, and 5.05, Recycling and Anti-Scavenging Regulations, introduced by Councilmember Swank. Are there any questions or comments? If not, then we will move on to 10922. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title I, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established, introduced by Councilmember Swank. Do we have any comments or questions? If not, we'll move on to ordinance 11022. This is an ordinance granting a special use permit to Montal LLC, owner of Athens Uptown Realty, 603 West Union Street, to allow a pylon sign in the city's right-of-way. This is introduced by Councilmember Grace. Any comments or questions? Ordinance 11112 is an ordinance authorizing the Athens City Shade Tree Commission to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, ODNR, USDA Forest Service, for participation in the urban canopy restoration program and declaring an emergency. It's introduced by Councilmember Ziff. If no questions or comments, we will move on to 11222. This is an ordinance amending the 2022 Appropriation Ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell. Any questions or comments for this ordinance? If not, we'll now move on to ordinances for first reading. And the council member introducing the ordinance will give a brief background about the particular ordinance. 11322 is an ordinance granting a special use permit to the Dairy Barn Arts Center to replace an existing directional sign located at the corner of Richland Avenue and Dairy Lane in the city's right-of-way, and is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. So this is the item that we discussed last week in committee. And the ordinance will give permission to the Dairy Barn to replace the existing sign that they have at the intersection of Richland and Dairy Lane. It is a wayfinding sign, fairly important to enable people to better find their way to the Dairy Barn Arts Center. And I do see that it is included in the language of the ordinance, that we have made their permission to use this space contingent on them reducing the size of the sign. Their initial design had a sign that was about 62 square feet, and the ordinance calls for the sign being no larger than 50 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Do we have any questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Swank?
What was the purpose of requiring a reduction in the size of the sign?
Service Safety Director Stone, yes.
Sure, Member Swank. The 50 square feet is the size that would be allowed if it were an onsite sign under the zoning ordinance, the sign provisions within the zoning ordinance.
Any other questions? Or comments? Yes, Councilmember Grace?
I would just follow up with, that was the recommendation of the Code Office with the approval. They recommended that it be kept to that size to be consistent with other sign allowances.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yes, another comment.
For the record, President Isley, I did get a call from the director of the Dairy Barn after last Monday's meeting, and I have not been able to get back with her. So I will do that. I'm committed to do that this week. And if any of you had spoken to her after last night's meeting or last week's meeting, I just haven't, you know, been able to do that yet. So I will do that this week.
Okay, thank you. Any other updates or questions from council members, administration, elected officials, or our audience members? If not, we'll move on to 11422. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III, Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.10, Alarm Systems. Section 3.10.04d, Alarm Activation and Fees. And this is introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Nysley. This is a change in our previous ordinance to specify specifically how much we are charging in fees for false alarms reported for any kind of safety issue, be that fire or burglary. Instead, now with this change, alarm fees would be established by a separate ordinance, and that would leave the ordinance that we are currently reviewing giving information about the ability of the city to follow up with criminal prosecution despite whether or not we respond to an alarm. And I think those are the main highlights. I'll ask Director Stone if there are any additional elements to this change that you think the council should be aware of.
I think the key thing here is, you know, we, a lot of ordinances have been passed over the decades that put a fee in them, and then they get codified in that particular title. And we've really made a push in the last, you know, few years to try to pull all the fees into Title I and change the language throughout the code to say fees established by a separate ordinance. And so that's what this is here. We made the recommendation, I think it's coming up actually, as the next ordinance in 11522, as far as what, if any changes should be made to fees, like, and try to do it once a year. And this was one that we identified back when we were going through that exercise where it didn't exist in Title I, it said it exists in Title III. And so this change would basically move that and put that language that says fees established by separate ordinance.
Thank you, Director Stone. And I did just want to ask one question about that, since we were recently speaking of false alarms or responses from fire to on-campus locations. And when I previously worked in the university's housing department, I was aware of students being fined for setting off the smoke detector, fire trucks having to come out, that sort of thing. But it's my understanding from our most recent conversation that the city does not receive fees from the university when those alarms happen. And I just wonder, is that at all related to this?
It's not typical that we receive fees from the university. Now, that's not always the case. Based on the conversation last week, I went back and did some checking with the fire chief. And there are instances, in most cases, when it is caused by, say, for instance, a contractor working at the university where, you know, will pass a cost along for improper activation to the university. They'll pass it on the contractor, and the contractor will pay the city. As far as, like, you know, sending money back for, say, a pulled alarm or something along those lines, that's typically not what we see.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, sir. It's interesting you bring that point up in regards to Ohio University. I had a lengthy conversation with the law director last week about this very topic, and my recommendation would be at second reading, we hear what her opinion is on that and have that discussion. But the point you bring up about collecting fees from the university's students for pulling that alarm and then not passing those on to us is a bit of a problem, I feel. And that's why I would like the law director to talk with us next week, and I don't want to put the assistant law director on the spot today having not been in that conversation. So if you could note that, please, when we get to second reading, rather than waiting to the third reading to hear that opinion. Thank you.
Councilmember Reisner.
I just want to remind council that we, the city, receives $50,000 a year from the university for our fire department. We use that money, along with our own money, to purchase fire engines and other equipment. So I think you have to weigh that in the balance of these other fees, which would be very minor compared to $50,000, which the university is under no obligation whatsoever to give to us.
Councilmember Swank.
If I remember right from my conversation with the law director, that 10-year, $50,000-a-year contract is up or about up. And the university does pay us for water, they do pay us for sewer. We're providing a service. It would be much, much more expensive for Ohio University to maintain a fire department like they maintain a police department than it would give us a barely $50,000 to protect millions of dollars of buildings, but more importantly, the lives of the students and faculty.
Mayor Patterson.
Just for a point of clarification. We have been under a five-year, initially five-year contracts with the university, $50,000 a year, so you're correct on that. We have currently gone into a three-year agreement with the university. So once we get through that three years, the university will have contributed over $650,000. You know, it all started with our ladder truck. To give people a little bit of historical background, given that that ladder truck that needed to be replaced was servicing 80%, 85% of our buildings that are four stories or greater are university properties. And so the university stepped up to help with the cost share. It rolled into our pumper truck most recently, well, I shouldn't say most recently, four years ago, to pay down the debt on the pumper truck. These are expensive pieces of apparatus, by the way. The ladder truck was 1.2 million. The pumper truck is, you know, just north of $700,000 for a truck. So they have been, the other thing to bear in mind, and I'm not in disagreement with your comments, Councilmember Swank, but just to kind of reframe a little bit, the university is our largest employer. So the lion's share of our general revenue that comes into the city is coming from those taxpayers, and that is what is also helping to support fire operations and capital improvements with our firefighting apparatus for the city of Athens.
Thanks, thanks for the comments. And we'll get additional information from the law director next week, or on our next reading of this, the second reading. Any other comments or questions? 11512 then is our next ordinance. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title I, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established, introduced by all members of council. And as Service Safety Director Stone mentioned, these are putting the fees established in Title I. And we have also noted that we have some new language in there. Failure of a subscriber to respond to the scene of an alarm in a timely manner can cause the fee to double. And then $500 for alarm systems that are disconnected pursuant to a section of code. And then our water rates, we have added a new fee of $50 for after-hours turn-on. And then we have the sewer rates that are increasing on the residential level from $5.72 to $5.89 a month. Commercial rates, $6.47, increases to $6.66. And then the industrial rate increases from $7.13 to $7.34. And then there are additional rates that go on, and I will not go on to read all of them for the rate changes for the metered amounts. We have also a new fee added in for, or in this title, the open burning permit inspection of $50, mobile vendor inspection of 25, and then the vending per month at 200. And I know that the vending at this point is under further discussion. And I know that Service Safety Director Stone clarified for council members after last week's discussion in one section of code, I believe we have it at $125. In this section, we'd be putting in 200, and that the $200 is closer to the actual costs. And so we could put it in at this $200 rate, and then after subsequent discussion, could revise downward if we find that that's workable. And then we have several other fees that have been increased. An optional dwelling unit inspection has been increased from 25 to 35. The Celebration Tree Program, which we discussed last week, has been increased from 100 to 400, in part because the 100 only covered the cost of the purchase of the trees, but didn't cover for any of the maintenance for subsequent years. And then a micro wireless silt tower permit of $75, that that's been added in. So that's a summary of some of the costs that are listed in this ordinance. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Swank.
A couple of questions on Section 11.12.03, Shared Transportation. First question is, does this apply to Uber and Lyft?
Member Swank, the shared transportation is very specific to micro mobility, so scooters, bikes, that. It does not apply to Uber and Lyft.
Okay, and then the second question, very much related, because of the tabulation here of how this displays on our computer, there's a $10,000 plus $10 per vehicle and $2,500 plus $10 per vehicle. I'm just asking for clarification. What does that apply to?
Right, so, and we had a lot of, there's no increase. I'm going to take a step back to this, and all this is doing is moving these fees into Title I that previously didn't exist there. They exist in Title 11. When we passed the micro mobility ordinances back when, a few years ago, when we thought that, you know, we were going to get crushed by scooters in the city, because that was what was happening in a lot of cities around the United States, this was the mechanism that, based on all our research that we said is appropriate for being able to deal with it. And so when you apply the first time as a company, wanting to utilize the public right-of-way for this business, which is what it is, you pay a $10,000 fee, and then you pay $10 for a vehicle that you're going to have in the city. In subsequent years, when you renew that fee, you pay $2,500 and then $10 per vehicle that you have in the city. So that's the mechanism by which, you know, some of our costs are recovered associated with administering the program.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to, excuse me. Councilmember Spelness.
Thank you. So I'm curious about when the last time the vending per month rate was increased.
Oh, gosh, I'd have to go back and look at the ordinance itself to see when it was last revised in terms of the amounts. You know, there was a revision back in 2013. I know that because it was me that brought that forward. But I think that there was revisions since then in terms of those fees.
Okay, so that brings me to the question of rental fees, which I had asked about last time, for landlords to pay. I believe that's $150 per unit per year. Is that correct?
Correct, correct. It's $150 per inspection fees. And then once you go above, like, 10 units per building, it drops to 80, because you're all at one location.
So, and I believe that was last raised in 2017, I think.
That sounds correct.
I think that's what I was told. So I'm wondering with the vendors, what that money goes to do?
Generally, that's administration of the program. So, you know, when you, and unfortunately, I don't have the whole language in front of me for, we talk about the Hawn Street vending, but you sign up for a month, basically. You sign up by a certain day, you get issued a permit, and then the checking to make sure that, you know, the person is acquiring the space. The mayor knows this a lot better than me because he helped work on the program specifically. But I don't know if I'm going to jump in.
It is administrative, but it is also the fact that we're using the public right-of-way, and in particular, a revenue generating portion of the right-of-way because they are metered spaces. And this goes back to the conversation that we had with Councilmembers Crowell. When we look up and down east, Washington, East Union, to where we have very few vendors currently that are taking advantage of or utilizing this permitting fee. And so we're actually unfortunately losing some revenue at those otherwise metered spaces. But that's where it came from, is it basically punsels out to what the revenue generation would be from, what is it, 6A in the morning, 7A in the morning, whatever it is, till 7P, 8P at night, to where that meter. And it's kind of an average, too, because we have different zones for what someone would pay at the meter. We have dollar zones per hour, we have 75 cent zones and 50 cent zones. We also have, within those three zones, we have three different authorized vending areas. Union Street being basically a dollar zone, but the Richland Avenue slash North-South Congress, I guess it would be, is a 75 cent zone. And then the Armory, Armory Street is a 50 cent zone. So it kind of averages out based upon the zones.
Thank you. I do have a follow-up question with that. So my question before had been whether the fees for, the rental fees, paid for that part, because that part is self-sustaining. I was corrected last week saying that the department in total is not self-sustaining, code enforcement. But that piece of it where they're checking code for, you know, the rentals and whatnot, is self-sustaining. Is that, am I understanding that correctly? So, you know, again, I'm concerned that are we getting enough to pay for? And I know you said we don't, we're not fully staffed. But if we were, does that, would that really pay for covering all of the rentals?
So for the, for the...
Inspection.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yep. For the, through the, the end of month eight, the Code Office had brought in $673,000 through the five primary means of revenue derivation that they have, with the lion's share being from rental permits. The entire budget of the code portion of the code department, that doesn't count the solid waste portion of it, because that comes from trash fees, is $708,000. So through the end of month eight, you know, we were on track to have the department be, generally bring in the amount of money that they spend to exist. It all goes into the debt, it's not a proprietary fund. So it all goes into the general fund, and it all comes out of the general fund for them. And so it can be more, it can be less. But in general, when you charge fees, you want fees to generally be in line with what the costs are to administer the system. So I believe that as of now, the amount of rental inspection fees that we charge are appropriate for the expenses incurred by the department.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Grace.
Just a point of clarity. I want to say that this ordinance does not, is not related to rental housing inspection fees. So just when the fees that are being moved into Title I and are being adjusted, none of the ones that we're talking about in this particular ordinance are rental housing inspection fees. So just so that, that's...
Yeah, separate topic, so thanks for...
It is a separate topic from this particular ordinance.
Councilmember Swank.
Just very quickly, back to the vending per month. The mayor said something that grabbed my attention, that we might, and correct me if I'm incorrectly quoting what she said, we might possibly be losing money on vending. Have we done any, allocating that area over there, have we done any research? Have we looked into why the vendors have disappeared?
Well, you know, that's something that, certainly something that Councilmember Crowell and I will dig into. I can tell you that, you know, I do sign an awful lot of peddler's permits. I was just at, like, I'm sure a few of you, at the Paw Paw Festival this weekend, and I spoke to several vendors while I was there. And there are some vendors that are coming up with some new, interesting vending products. And, but they also indicated to me that they are finding that they are able to generate more revenue at quote-unquote vending deserts in the city of Athens. I mentioned, I think, at council last time, that the Appalachian Behavioral Health and Oblenus Hospital is a site where certainly there are a few restaurants down there, but you have to hoof it, which is okay, it's good exercise. But they, it's not close enough in for them to be able to have access to food, and interestingly, or coffee. And so, so I think the vendors, that's what we're kind of seeing. We're seeing vendors go to private properties where they can get authorization from that property owner, which is what you need to qualify to get a peddler's permit. The peddler's permits are $25 a month, I believe, because you're vending on private property. There's no revenue to be lost or gained by the city on those private properties, other than through the permit itself. Again, $25 fee per month. The, I think COVID certainly had an impact on vendors. I think we're going to start to see some vending coming back again. But this is something that Councilmember Crowell and I are going to dig in deep and see. What do we need to do to reinvigorate the vending here in the city? And one of the things that was really important in talking to some of the vendors is, you know, you have handcraft slash art vendors, to where, I mentioned this at the committee meeting, is that, you know, when you look at your walk-up traffic, you've got to sell, you know, a lot more product on something that not everyone during the lunch hour is looking to purchase a piece of art or some jewelry or a shirt versus food. And so looking at something that's more equitable for our vendors. So that may help as well, Councilmember Swank.
Okay, well, thanks for all the discussion. We'll look forward to further discussion on that other topic. But right now, we're moving this into Title I, so that'll be, that's a help. All right, it's good to have discussion. 11622 is our next ordinance. This is an ordinance, amending ordinance 7421, the hours of operation for the Athens Uptown Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area, known as DORA. This is introduced by all members of council. And as I understand, what we're doing is DORA, the Designated Outdoor Recreation Refreshment Area, has worked very well, and you, it's the administration's interest in expanding the hours of this. It would still be designated to certain months, basically from May to through August, I believe, but opening it up to the Monday through Wednesday dates, as well as the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So any questions or comments about this? Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 11722. This is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA State Project Agreement for Municipal Bridge Inspection Program Services. This is the 2023 renewal and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Allow me to read the pertinent sections to this. Whereas the city of Athens has determined the need for Bridge Inspection Program Services, including, but not limited to, routine inspection, element-level inspection, critical findings report, fracture-critical member inspection, load rating calculations and reports, weight limits, posting signs, recommendations, scour assessments, scour plans of action, development of fracture-critical plans, and underwater dive inspection reports if needed. And then it goes on, so on, so forth, until we get to Section 1. The Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to enter into an LPA State Project Agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for Bridge Inspection Program Services 2023 Renewal, project ID number 117554, a copy of which is attached heretofore and incorporated herein. This is a sidebar. When this was introduced last week in committee, we discussed it. That was on a Monday or Tuesday, whatever it was. And the very next day, I'm going down Richland Avenue to the bridge that has the Athens, Ohio, and I saw the state of Ohio busy inspecting a bridge. Apparently, they haven't got the word yet that we haven't passed this thing yet. So are they creating a fait complet here, or?
Member Reisner, are you referring to the US-50 Bridge over, and US-33 Bridge over Richland Avenue?
Yeah, that'd be it.
Okay, that's not the bridges that you are authorizing them to inspect. So on the state system, ODOT maintains responsibility for those inspections. And every year, they send a list of inspection reports and that we keep on file for the ones on the state system. These are specifically ones that are not on the... are not on the state system. So if you can imagine the Richland Bridge over the Hocking, Richland Bridge over the Oxbow, the Stimson Bridge over the Hocking, the Union Bridge over the Hocking, there are several bridges along Richland Avenue. Those are all the ones. The bridge on Carychill Drive that, that you're giving authorization for ODOT to do the inspections on.
Okay, that's a relief. So that's essentially the ordinance.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. If none, we'll move on now to Ordinance 11812. This is, excuse me, 11822, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to suspend temporarily the fee for parking at metered spaces in the municipal parking garage. Introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me read Section One. The Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to suspend the fee for parking in the municipal parking garage, excluding two hour metered spaces on one upper, as follows: after 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, December 1st, 8th, 15th, 22nd of 2022, and all day Saturday, December 3rd, 10th, 17th, and 24th, 2022. Section Two, the ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law upon its passage and approval by the mayor. So that's something we do every year.
Okay. Questions or comments? If none, we'll move on to Ordinance 11922. This is an ordinance suspending Athens City Code Section 7.05.03, continuous parking in the same location from Monday, December 12th, 2022, through midnight on Sunday, January 8th, 2023, and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Your reading of the title was the entire ordinance. So I don't think there's any need for me to repeat your, what you just said.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Swank.
I understand the significance of Monday, December 12th. That's the Monday after Ohio University closes for fall semester. I am a little confused by the date, Sunday, January 8th. Why did we pick that?
Our understanding is that weekend is move-in for Ohio University, even though winter classes don't begin until
December 12th.
Well, I'm looking at the university calendar, and the first day of class, this is very late this year. It's not till the 17th of January.
But we're saying that's move-in. Move-in is on the 12th.
So 12th is a Thursday, and we're only extending this to the 8th.
All right. We can change it if you want to. We think it probably makes sense to do it this time. We're not really doing this for students. We're doing this for people who are traveling away for the holidays and want to leave their car on the street for a period of time, not have to move it every 24 hours, but it doesn't stop.
Mayor Patterson.
Historically, this particular piece of legislation was for people who had guests coming in to visit during the holidays and not wanting to have to go and walk your car every 24 hours when you have guests coming in or leaving to go visit with others elsewhere. It wasn't necessarily designed with the student body in mind, but we are being cognizant that there are students who may be leaving their cars behind. So this is a change. This is not what it has been traditionally in the past.
Councilmember Swank.
I guess what I was getting at is taking it a step further, not the students, but faculty and staff who may be leaving for that time period, knowing that their first academic obligation is until the 17th of January, and therefore they may be gone that entire week, too. You know, you leave your car, go, come back. It's just an unusually late return. This is almost like the old corridor system. And I could, you know, I know a lot of people that, that do leave for that entire off-period. I guess what I'm wondering is, could we just do it to the 15th? Just add one more week?
I, you know, yeah, quite honestly, whatever works. I mean, it, to me, it isn't really a big deal. We could change it to the 15th, you know. I'm flexible on this. I would, I would wager to say that most faculty or staff or even myself, if I'm leaving, I likely have a place to keep my car that's off the street, but that isn't the case everywhere, and I recognize that.
Yeah. I'm just thinking of the, the Near East Side, which is often a parking lot during the holidays.
So are we having a suggestion to change it to the 15th? And then my question would be, is, at this point, it's the first reading, and so do we need a motion and a second and to amend and change it to the 15th date? So you'll need to
No, the ordinance has been read, so you'd have to offer an amendment to change it.
Right.
I'd just be curious, what do you think? If it's a harebrained idea, I won't, I won't make the motion. We can just move on.
Councilmember Grace.
Thank you. I agree that it makes sense to align this suspension of the long-term parking with the university break, whether it is students or faculty members, people leaving town. Often, people will plan their times away, or, or if they're in town and they just don't want to go anywhere because they don't have to, because, because the university is closed. It makes sense to align the suspension of the 24-hour parking to the university schedule. And so I make a motion that we amend the ordinance to read that it continues to the 15th of January.
I would second that.
Okay. Grace, we have a motion and second for amending the, the ordinance 11922. And do we have any other discussion? Anybody else want to bring one up? Anything else up? Then if not, we'll go, we'll have a vote. All those in favor of amending 11922 to change the date of January 20, January 8, 2023, end date to January 15. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ordinance has been amended, read for the first time again. Okay, thank you.
Read twice for the first time.
We'll move on to 12022. This is an ordinance amending the 2022 Appropriation Ordinance and authorizing the auditor to make inter-fund transfers. This is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. As discussed at committee and through a presentation provided by the Service Safety Director, there are a number of items on this appropriation ordinance, including appropriating from the unappropriated balance $230,000 to the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, as well as $30,000 to the Water Fund, transaction code 200s for maintenance, and $20,000 to the Sewer Fund for the same. And this is, all three of these are due to the city administration looking into the, into future months and being prepared for these expenses, both the Water Fund and Sewer Fund. It's to make sure that we have the parts on hand in our storage facilities for sewer or water emergencies, particularly in the winter months. We do know there's, there are some supply chain issues and some backordering that often happens, particularly in the post, excuse me, not post, in the COVID period. And so this is just the city administration being on top of things and making sure we have the parts that we need as we go into the winter months. And then the auditor's office looking carefully at the 100s, the personnel, costs for the Recreation Fund and the Community Center Fund, and making sure we have enough money in, in those funds for paying our, our staff going forward. So in addition to the costs I already mentioned, then these will then be transferred from ARPA to the Recreation Fund 270 and the Community Center Fund 271. And then finally appropriating from the unappropriated balance, $180,000 to 270 and $200,000 to 271. Both of these are transaction code 100s, which is our personnel costs. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay, thank you. Any other quest, any questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to 12122. This is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a purchase agreement with Ohio University for the acquisition of approximately 10.3685 acres of land on Stimson Avenue to construct a new fire station and to provide public recreation green space. Introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. This one's going to take a little time to read. The ordinance with its attachments is 18 pages long. I have no intention of reading all 18. We'll just get through the pertinent sections. The Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to enter into a purchase agreement with Ohio University for the acquisition of approximately 10.3685 acres of land on Stimson Avenue at the appraised value not to exceed $600,000 to construct a new fire station and provide public recreation, recreational green space. A copy of Ohio University's resolution approving the sale of the land, a legal description and plat, and a draft purchase agreement are attached heretofu and incorporated herein by reference. The purchase agreement in final form with substantially the same terms as the draft agreement shall be attached no later than the third reading. Section Two, the 2022 Appropriation Ordinance 150-21 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $9 million to Fire Station Debt Fund 430.490, transaction code 600 for transfer. Section Three, the auditor is hereby authorized to make the following inter-fund transfer: from Fire Station Debt Fund 430 to Safety Service Police and Fire Fund 206, amount $9 million. Section Four, the 2022 Appropriation Ordinance 15021 is further amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $600,000 to Safety Service Police and Fire Fund 206.208, transaction code 500, for land purchase and site preparation and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. Section Five, the Service Safety Director is further authorized to expend up to $600,000 for Safety Service Police and Fire Fund 206.208, transaction code 500, for said acquisition and site preparation. Section Six, the ordinance shall be in effect in full force upon passage and approval by the mayor. It's been read for the first time.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Swank?
How is the appraisal process coming?
We have a letter, which is going to be the cover letter for the appraisal, that values the property substantially less than $600,000. Right now, the appraisal, because of the covenants placed on the, the property by the Board of Trustees in their resolution that basically restricts most of the use, the, the resultant value is approximately $202,000. So we would like to keep this $600,000 appropriation in here because I anticipate costs in some form associated with site prep and the early site package for, for Phil and working with the Ohio Department of Transportation for excess material coming off of the US-5033 site. So basically, we would use this additional appropriations to help get that moving here through the winter. Of note, the appraisal process is not, it's a two-step process. The Department of Administrative Services requires both an appraisal by a pre-qualified appraiser by the state of Ohio and an appraisal review by a pre-qualified appraiser of the state of Ohio. And so I anticipate later this week, not only that cover letter, but also the full appraisal packet to be in my hands that I can share with Ohio University, that they can then submit to the appraisal reviewer, who is under their employ, as basically a check and balance on that number. So, you know, I, I was not prepared to write that number into the purchase agreement tonight yet because, but I was, because I got the letter this morning, you know, pretty happy to, to basically share that number, given where it is relative to the amount we thought it could be.
If we're remotely close to that number, I think the citizens of Athens will be overwhelmed with joy.
Mayor Patterson.
I, I do, for transparency's sake, again, in the ordinance, please recognize that in Sections both Four and Sections Five, it does speak to acquisition as well as site prep, hence us keeping it at that 600,000. So as Director Stone was just mentioning, it gives us a much longer runway in which we can sit there and start working with ODOT to get Phil in, as well as other site prep work that we're going to have to do on this site.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember McCurry.
Thank you, President Isley. I am under the impression that since we are not taking action, and this is just first reading, that it's not necessary for Ohio University employees to recuse themselves or to leave for this discussion?
Yeah.
Well, you can't take part in the discussion.
Right.
So that's the understanding from my, yeah, from the law director's opinion.
Okay.
That you could be here and then, yeah.
Thank you.
But when vote time comes, yes. Do need to recuse yourselves. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Yes, Service Safety Director Stone?
I do have a couple of other things, just by explanation, some of the items that are attached to the ordinance. So the thing that we were really concerned about was actually getting the legal description and the, and the plat of survey prepared in time to, to be ready for the packet. And we did just get that really at the end of the week last week, so it could come in in time. And, and one of the big challenges had to do with the eastern boundary and resolving where that eastern boundary line was. And that's why it was taking all the way up to the very end, because the eastern boundary of the property is the former river center line before the river was moved. So there's just not a lot of record of that, because most of the calls associated with that Outlet Nine that, that makes that eastern boundary, talk about the meanderings of said river. Not specific, so the surveyor did, did a lot of great work to put it together, and now we have what we believe is the best, with all the best evidence, where that eastern boundary actually is. And the, the purchase contract that's in there should be in its, in its final form, minus the, the dollar amount. We did get the things worked through that, that were still in draft at the end of last week. So other than that dollar amount, that should be what you'll see for third reading. That includes the covenants that will be in the warranty deed when the time comes, that, that basically restricts the city from doing anything on the additional six acres, which is to be preserved for public recreation purposes, green space. That's functionally, if you're looking at the site right now, it's the area behind that front area, and, and it's kind of delineated at this point with, with soccer balls out there in the space that is to be preserved.
Okay. Thanks for the information. Thanks for the research. I also understand you were, you were doing a lot of digging last week.
There was a lot going on at the end of last week. You tried to pull this together.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements and other business. We will be having a special session next week, and the purpose of that being to, to be able to move this legislation forward for the purchase of the, of the land for the fire station, so that we're moving forward in good time this fall without delay.
Is that the full work for after committees?
We haven't decided yet. Yeah, so. Okay. And then also, we have moved up the deadline by one day for council committee chairs who might, or administration who might have agenda items, because we need to have them by end of the business day tomorrow, by noon tomorrow, excuse me. Noon tomorrow. Okay. All right. Other items. We now have a motion to accept the August 2022 financial reports.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. They've been approved. They're accepted. Next, a motion to accept the August 2022 credit card transactions.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Those have been accepted as well. We now have under our other business a reconsideration of Ordinance 8522. It's not very often that we have used this, in fact, not since I've been on council, but it is a rule of council that we can, within one week of considering an ordinance, and 8522 was considered last week. So we are restricted to, tonight needs to be the night under which to, to have that reconsideration. And that's for the Ordinance Amending Athens City Code Title 29, the Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.36, Prohibited Actions, to add Section 29.36.02, Tenant's Right to Pay to Stay. And so once again, what we will be doing is that the first part of this is that we will have a motion for that reconsideration. So we need to have a motion, we need to have a second, and we can have discussion. And if we have any public comments, which I do believe we do have some members here tonight who want to comment from the public, and then we will do that. So do I have a motion for that reconsideration?
So moved. Second.
Okay. We have the motion and second, and Okay, we have the motion and second, and we will, at this point now, before the vote, then take comments. So do we have any comments to begin with from council members? Yes, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. So if I understand correctly, we cannot table the reconsideration. Is that correct?
You, 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 well, we're going to reconsider it. We need to vote on that first. And then, so what we're doing is reconsidering the original ordinance that went through, the 8522. So you could, as a motion, table 8522 after you have done the motion to reconsider.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for the question. Okay, Councilmember Ziff, yes?
Thank you, President Isley. Just to, excuse me, just for a point of clarification, everybody, the reason that I moved for this reconsideration of the ordinance was that there were several people who had wanted to comment on this ordinance when we first passed it, and through an unfortunate miscommunication, we're unable to do so. And I feel like it's our job to make sure that people are able to say what they want to be able to say and be heard. That's part of the lovely thing we call the democratic process. So that's my reasoning.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any other comments from council members, or administration, or elected officials? If not, then do we have comments from the public? Mr. Rittenhouse, I believe you're here tonight to speak on this. And if you can give us your name and address, and if you represent a group.
Sure. My name is Rusty Rittenhouse. I'm an attorney at Lavellin Associates, 449 East State Street, Athens, Ohio. While I do represent many, many people, I'm only here speaking on my own behalf. I've sent multiple emails to council expressing my concerns on this ordinance, and I imagine at this point you're well-bursted most of those. I do appreciate you taking on the reconsideration of this ordinance. One of the primary issues dealt with the equitable outcome of this ordinance. The purpose of this ordinance, if I understood, is if the tenant were to put the landlord in the same position they would have been but for the breach, what would be the harm in allowing them to continue to stay at the lease? However, in the ordinance, the legal fees of the landlord are capped at $125. As anyone who's ever hired a lawyer will know, that $125 will get you nowhere. Lawyers bill between $200 and $300 an hour. A typical eviction will take four to five hours worth of work. So it's not uncommon for a landlord to have to incur $1,000 in legal fees in order to pursue an eviction. Additionally, unlike the individuals here today, typically landlords are corporations, LLCs, trust partnerships, other sorts of legal entities. It's done for the purpose to limit their liability. If there's a house that burns down, the company gets sued rather than the individual. The drawback of that is a company, LLC, partnership, or trust cannot represent themselves in court. That would be because they're not an individual. An individual can only speak on behalf of the company. So they're required to hire a lawyer, otherwise the case will be thrown out for the unauthorized practice of law. So most landlords will be required to have a landlord in order to pursue an eviction. So thus, they will incur legal fees, and a substantial amount. So one of the proposals, I understand, is if this is reconsidered, the language dealing with the cap, $125, would be removed. That instead would be replaced with reimbursement of reasonable attorney's fees. And I think that provides a more equitable outcome for all parties involved. The other issue I wanted to speak on, and I've raised this a few times, deals with the enforceability of this ordinance and what will happen if folks rely on this to their detriment. I've been practicing a long time, and I practiced all through COVID. During COVID, you may recall that there were several eviction moratoriums that went in place, and they were quite confusing. It was very common for me to go to court and encounter a tenant who had misunderstood what their rights were with these eviction moratoriums. They saw on the news that they didn't have to pay rent anymore, there was an eviction moratorium. So in reliance of that, they stopped paying rent. They didn't read the actual requirements of the moratorium, and thus, when they'd get to court, they'd find the unexpected surprise that they had breached the lease and they were being evicted and had to leave. I don't want to see that happen in Athens County with this ordinance, or I guess the city of Athens. This only actually affects the city of Athens. I've talked to you about the, in my emails, how the revised code was revised and the new sections of 5321.19 and 5321.20 go into effect later this week. I do believe those sections preempt the municipalities from passing these sorts of ordinance. But I wanted to try to put this in a simpler term, if you allow me to keep speaking, I know I only have three minutes.
You've got about one minute left.
All right. It deals with the constitutionality of it. And you may remember, I'm taking you back to social studies, Marbury versus Madison, where judicial review was first found to be something a court had. In that case, the government had exceeded its authority in creating law, and thus, the law was found unconstitutional, unenforceable. The logistics of how a pay-to-stay ordinance work is that it forces a landlord to accept rent after an eviction notice is served on the tenant. In order for an eviction to proceed forward, the court has to have jurisdiction. In order for them to have jurisdiction, a valid eviction notice has to be served on the tenant. If, after the eviction notice is served, the landlord were to accept rent, it invalidates the eviction notice, thereby divesting the court of jurisdiction. Most cases, you see that, at the very end of the decision, it says dismissed for lack of jurisdiction. Municipalities have many powers, but they do not have the power to restrict, restrain, or limit the powers or the jurisdiction of a court. And in effect, by forcing the landlord to accept this rent, it invalidates the eviction notice and thereby divest the court of jurisdiction. And that's simply beyond the powers that you have. If you have any questions about what I've mentioned today or any of my past correspondence, I'd be happy to answer them, or about the logistics of a eviction process.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for coming tonight. All right, and do we have any other persons wishing to make comments tonight about this reconsideration? Yes, Councilmember Spionas?
Yes, I am going to read some information from Lucy Schwalley, doesn't pay, because when Law Director Eliason, in her last statement regarding the constitutionality of the pay-to-stay ordinance, said that it could be to the detriment, my interpretation. And so I asked Lucy Schwalley about this, and she said, and I won't go belabor this too much, but in essence, as far as services that may be able to provide rent assistance, HABCAP has had an ongoing rent assistance program during the pandemic. Their current pot of money expires at the end of September. There will be a new program beginning at that point, et cetera. Then she has a link to that. ODJFS also provides emergency rent assistance to certain families that qualify under the PRC program. Both these programs can be used to pay late fees, court costs, and attorney's fees as well. Occasionally, churches in the area will also provide rent assistance for the purpose of keeping families housed. The United Athens County Tenants has a good roundup of rent assistance options at their website. And we at the Southern Southeast Ohio Legal Services, where she is the director, will also be publishing some clear materials on Athens Pay to Stay once it's in effect. We will not release before the ordinance is effective, so we don't want to create confusion, she said. The point being is that some of these concerns, based on my communications with Lucy Schwalley, is that they could be moot. And also, having spoken to people that I know, landlords that I know in the community that I know are responsible people, they have said that this won't affect them at all, because they, it so rarely even comes up, because they make a practice of working with their tenants to make sure that they stay housed.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for reading Lucy Schwalley's statement. Any other comments? So we have a motion and second for reconsidering this, and if there's no further discussion, then we'll take a vote on that motion to reconsider. And we will note that Councilmember Grace has recused herself from this process. So all those in favor of the motion to reconsider ordinance 8522, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
So we have two votes against reconsideration and the four votes for. So that care, that it passes, that motion passes, yes. Councilmember Swank, yes?
Madam Chairman, I move that we refer this to committee, the appropriate committee, and I believe it was committee of the whole that first brought this forward as opposed to an individual committee. So I move to refer this to committee.
If you refer it to committee, to committee dies. You want to delay it.
You'll have to start it over again. I think you want to table, I don't know what you want to do. I will not speak for you, but I will.
Well, refer to committee is one of the four forms of tabling.
It will have to, from my understanding from Law Director Eliason, and we can check for verification with Assistant Law Director Brainer Hiddle, that the, that particular ordinance would die, and you would have to start over again. Is that?
I think it's 8522.
That's not how I read it. Rule number 14 says, no, not rule number 14, that was speaking to, from the public. Which one was it? Reconsider.
22 is referring back to the committee, and 24 is reconsideration.
After the decision on any question has been voted upon, any member who voted on the prevailing side may move to reconsider reconsideration of any action at the same or the next succeeding meeting, which we've done. A motion to reconsider shall require the same number of votes as it is required to adopt an ordinance or resolution. After a motion for reconsideration has been acted upon, no other motion for a reconsideration thereof shall be made without unanimous consent. All this says to me is, we had to vote to reconsider tonight. It says nothing about tabling or where this goes or anything. In other words, we voted tonight by vote of whatever to whatever to reconsider. Now, that's closed, is the way I interpret this.
Correct.
And at this point in time, we've done what we needed to do in the allotted time. Now, we can take any other action at this point. We could amend, we could, we could, we could table, we could refer to committee, we could do any of that.
Well, and I hear you, and I appreciate your comments. And what I'd like to do is defer to Councilmember Ziff, as he was the one that brought forth the motion to reconsider tonight, and to see what other action he may want to take.
Thank you, President Isley. Yes, I was actually also going to move to table this until either next week or the following, either for the special session of next week or the regular session of council the following week. That was my plan.
And the purpose being, is that we had one other person, we had another individual from the public who wanted to make a comment, who is not able to be here tonight.
That's one of the reasons. I have additional ones, and that's why I wanted to refer it to committee, which would require second, a vote, or a second, at which time we could have discussions and a vote, at which time I could explain, because I can't explain why I want to do this without a motion and a second. We can't have discussion without a motion and a second, is what I'm saying.
That's correct. And so the motion and second, if you do, I'm asking you to listen to what Councilmember Ziff is saying on the motion to table. And so are you making?
Well, there are two different, he's talking tabling, I'm talking about referring to committee. Those are both examples of tabling a motion. There are four ways to table a motion. So it, it doesn't matter one way or the other, but we need to get to the point where we have a discussion as to why we want to do this before we vote.
So are you willing to defer to his motion to table? Would be my question, because as I understand, from what the law director has stated and what our other law advisor is saying to us this evening, the motion to refer back to committee kills the ordinance, and you have to start all over again. And if you do a motion to table, as I understand it, what could happen then next week? You could remove it, take it off the table, and consider it once again at its third reading, rather than starting all over again. And that's my only reason for talking through those steps.
Could I add one then?
Yes.
Or I guess, thank you, President, I just question if we were to table until either next week with the special session or the following week for the regular session of council, would we then, I assume, have an opportunity to discuss amendments to the ordinance at that time?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
That's fine, I disagree, but that's fine with me.
Okay, so you are making a motion to table, is that correct?
I am.
I was second.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Swank. So we have a motion, second to table, ordinance 8522. And is there any further discussion? Yes, Councilmember Swank?
The reason I would like it tabled is, there are two pieces missing here in the conversation, I believe. One is a conversation with the judge who would preside over this. While we can, over an eviction process, while we as a body cannot compel a judge to come to council, I would like to extend an invitation to that judge to come and explain the eviction process so that we can get a better handle on the process and the possible costs associated with it. As Mr. Rittenhouse pointed out today, and probably accurately so, this can be an expensive proposition. But I would like to hear from the judge what the process is and what he or she, I'm not sure which judge this is, he or she would predict, what predictable costs would be. The second thing I would like to hear from, and I know this one thing Ben has addressed, I would like to hear from one or more landlords, two things. Number one, the current frequency of the problem. How big a problem is this in the first place? And secondly, and this might be the most important part, how are landlords currently handling people who missed their rent? The thing that's attractive about this ordinance to me is very, very simple, and I've been consistent in this position all along. There are protected categories in this city, in this state, in this country, that prohibit landlords from evicting tenants. Sexual orientation, religion, race, gender. There are things that prevent that from happening. You rent to somebody and you find out something about, it could be their political persuasion, and you find out something about somebody's landlord, they missed their rent, and now you can kick them out. This would protect those things from happening, and that's very important to me. But anyway, the judge and the landlords, I hope we can get at least one of each here next week to answer some questions so that we can get this thing passed or not passed once and for all.
Okay. Councilmember Spionas?
Yeah, I contacted Judge Grace at one point to ask some of these questions, and he said that he, judges were not at liberty to talk about that, because it would sound political or something like that. They, just like Sarah, a member of Grace, can't talk about the fact that she's a landlord, so she can't weigh in. And by the way, he is too. But in any case, there are, there is someone in the court system who specializes in this who could talk about it if so desired. So it would not probably be a judge. And landlord may not want to come forward to talk about this.
Oh, I know two that will.
I know some that, as I said earlier, who have talked about this and have told me that it really doesn't affect them, because they work with their tenants until they can figure something out.
Okay.
And so it's a rare occurrence, because they do that. Now, I don't think that's true for all of them.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate this. I'm trying to keep us on a schedule tonight, because we still have executive session to go into. We've now been talking about this for over our 15-minute limit, and I would say, is there, if there are any final comments, questions? Then what I'd like to do is have us take a vote on the motion to table 8522. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
We have two opposed, four in favor of the motion to table, so the motion passes.
Point of clarification?
Yes.
In that tabling, did we designate table to when?
We did not specifically, because we're not sure at which point that is going to be able to come forward to allow the landlords to speak, so, but we will keep it timely. Councilmember Spionas, I assure you. Okay, are there any other announcements that folks need to make tonight? If no other announcements, we now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. Is there anybody in the audience who might want to speak about something? You have up to three minutes if you have a particular topic, and our only restriction is, is that it can't be anything that's been on the agenda already this evening. Okay. Seeing that there aren't any persons who want to speak tonight, the next steps that I'm going to do is have us go into executive session, and this is a point at which all persons vacate the room. persons vacate the room. But what we do, knowing that we have students here who would like to talk to the council members or to the city administration, we allow a 10- to 12-minute gap from the time that we take that vote to go into executive session, until we ask you to leave and close the doors. So hopefully, it gives you all enough time to, for us to field all your questions. So right now, what I need to do is to entertain a motion for going into executive session.
President Isley, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn into executive session for the purposes of discussing collective bargaining. And this session will include all members of council, president of council, mayor, service safety director, the city auditor.
Also me.
And our assistant law director.
Okay. Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. And when we have the executive session vote, we do need to do roll call vote. So Councilmember Spielness, I need you to say aye or nay? Okay. Councilmember Reisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Crowell?
Aye.
Councilmember Swank?
Aye.
Councilmember Grace?
Aye.
Councilmember Zip?
Aye.
Councilmember McCary?
Aye.
Okay. It is 8:32. And so we'll give you 12 minutes, we'll give you to 8:44. And I will explain one other thing. When we're finished with the executive session, if there is somebody here from the press or somebody who didn't get all their questions answered and they want to remain, we do open the doors after the executive session and see if there's anybody else that wants to come in, and then we do a motion to adjourn. So 8:32, you've got until 8:44.
There was a second to that, I'm sorry.
There was a second to the motion, yes. Zip. Okay. And come on up and ask any questions.